Happy February. New counselor of business, Counselor Wilber?
Yeah, I'm actually, I'm happy to report we have five teams officially registered for Relay for Life, so that's a good start in our February is registration month, so I just encourage everybody to register and get involved and make it the best one yet.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson?
Does City Hall have a, sorry, are you on a team, your worship?
Yes, we do. I think we've organized a team through City Hall and Julie's looking after spearheading that on our behalf.
Gotcha.
And so I'd like to suggest on the basis of that, that maybe we would send a letter to our neighboring communities in Tumbler Ridge and Chetlin, Hudson Hope, and Julie to suggest we challenge them to put in a team and compete in our Relay for Life, an amazing cause for all of us to support.
Second that.
Counselor Malkinson?
I'll move or second that.
All right, thank you. So move that we'll send a letter to neighboring communities, Counselor Wilbur? Discussion, are you all right with that?
They're on different days, eh? The events, they're not all held on the same day.
In Dawson?
But Tumbler Ridge and Chetlin don't have a Relay for Life.
They don't? Or Chetlin usually does.
I don't think they're registered this year.
We checked and it didn't seem they did, and that's why we thought it might be worthwhile to send a letter and ask if they'd be willing to participate.
Excuse me, I can't hear you guys.
Sorry.
So we're just suggesting we're going to send a letter to the neighboring communities of Chetlin, Tumbler Ridge, to put a, see if they would be willing to put a team into our Relay for Life in Dawson Creek.
And Pooscoopy?
And Pooscoopy, yeah. Yes, Counselor Kenny?
A few years ago there, I used to, I coordinated that for three years when I first moved to Dawson Creek, but Tumbler Ridge used to do a relay to Dawson Creek, starting in Tumbler Ridge. They'd put a team together and then they would each do a length and then they all met here and joined the festivities here.
So I think it'd be a great opportunity for us to engage in some conversation and discussion and see if there's some opportunity for us to either get them to contribute or participate, or have their own event that would complement the organization of the Relay for Life here.
Like that.
All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. So we'll send that letter off. Item three, our minutes of our regular meeting of January 20th, 2014, were there any errors or ome- oh, sorry, come on motion?
I like motion.
Wilbur, seconded, Kenny, any errors or omissions? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. And our minutes of our special meeting on January 29th, motion, Counselor McFadden, Counselor Malkinson, any errors or omissions? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Was there any business arising out of the minutes? For anyone? Item five, five one, we have correspondence, we have a letter from the MLA Coquitlam Mallardville. Counselor Parslow?
Move that we receive for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur? Discussion, Counselor Malkinson?
I am, something that came to my mind, you know, we recently provided feedback to the ministry on our position on, on some of these proposed changes, and I'm wondering if it would be nonsense or not to forward the, our same letter to this, Selena Robinson as well? Would that make any sense?
Um, I, so I guess I'd be looking for some advice, I would assume that they would be part of the parliamentary process and procedure, would have access through the minister who's dealing with the issue to be able to have access to any information that would be submitted, because it's all part of that committee process, I would think, but I'd look through to administration. Jim, would you have any advice on that in terms of?
Through your worship, my understanding is all feedback is going first to the parliamentary committee and then will or won't find its way into the legislation. The government is the government, you're generally better off to deal with the government of the day, no matter what their political stripe is.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Item five point two, we have a letter from Mitch Campsall in the North Central Local Government Association nomination. Counselor Wilbur?
I don't know how I actually go about this, we did it differently a little bit last year, but I would like to put my name forward for Director at Large.
Okay, Counselor McFadden?
I second the motion. So, was that a motion?
I don't know.
Yes, it is. Can I make a motion myself?
Sure.
I don't think so.
I suggest we receive the letter first and then deal with the nomination process.
Bring it back in and, into our business?
Sure, I move we receive the letter.
Okay, is that, does that all right with you, Counselor Wilber?
Perfect, yep, yep.
Okay, so we'll, Malkinson, that we're receiving for information, Counselor Kenny, seconded. All those in, sorry, discussion, all in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you.
Now do we discuss nominating?
Sure.
I move that, make a motion?
City of Dawson Creek, we-
City of Dawson Creek, I don't know, how do you word that?
Just nominate, Counselor.
I'm just nominating Councilship Director at Large.
Seconded by Counselor McFadden. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Item five point three, we have a letter from Richard and Linda McElhern on residents on 21st Street in regards to the hydroelectrical substation. Counselor, sorry, Counselor Schuman, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I can't hear you guys unless you speak into the mic, like honestly, as soon as you turn your face away, I hear nothing.
Okay, we'll do our best to keep that going. Counselor Parslow?
Concerning this letter from Richard and Linda McElhern, the hydroelectrical substation property, I move that we receive this for information.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Discussion, Counselor Malkinson?
Your worship, I believe that you had wanted to maybe reach out to Hydro and correspond with the owners along that, well, not the owners along that street, but rather all those affected, about what you could find out.
Yeah, I guess I, you know, as I read their letter and think about it in terms of what those folks along there have been experiencing, it was worthwhile to write a letter to Hydro to see if they would consider doing anything that would assist the residents in either beautification or some way to provide some improvements to the optics of the area, but on the other side of it there, it's a, it's an industrial area, properties were there, so I was going to throw that out as a suggestion to council, we've got a motion to receive it, and so.
Well, I assume we receive it and then if we wish to deal with it.
All right.
That's my assumption.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, carried. So I'd like to bring that forward, that I would like to bridge the topic with Hydro, and at least send them a letter and see if there's anything that they would be willing to consider as-
Such as beautification.
Such as a beautification in the project. Moved by Counselor Parslow. Seconded, Malkinson. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Yeah, I thought it was worthwhile, right, in terms of at least reaching out to them and, and.
Yep.
So item five point four, we have a letter from Connie Patterson, President of the Exhibition Association. Counselor Kenny?
I move we receive for information.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Kenny, we receive, seconded. Counselor Malkinson. Discussion.
Well, there are many items to discuss, but maybe just receive it and then discuss what we want to, because this is, this is later on in the agenda, so maybe we no need to discuss it now.
Yeah, absolutely, we got a, we have a proper, a point on our agenda coming up that'll deal specifically with us, so I think it's absolutely appropriate, we will receive it and have it as part of our conversation. Thank you. Any further conver- discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Item five five, we have a letter from Dan Davies, the president, chairperson of the NCLGA Convention Committee. Counselor Kenny?
I move that we, of course, sponsor this event. I would look to staff as to the amount that we would, that we normally would sponsor.
Thank you.
Through your worship, I wouldn't say there's a normal amount, what I would say is that Fort St. John has traditionally given us 5,000 for pretty much anything we're doing, NCSMA, energy conferences, so I think you might want to reciprocate at that level.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that we sponsor the NCLGA event for the amount of $5,000.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Thank you. So we're a little ahead of time on our agenda for our delegations at nine o'clock, so we'll move to item seven, our reports. So the first item we have is item seven one, director, regards Rockwell Pub application. Counselor Malkinson?
Move that we, excuse me, received this report from our Director of Corporate Administration regarding Rockwell's Pub application for the extension of hours, and that we recommend, or, yeah, the council recommend that the application for a liquor primary license held by Rockwell's Pub be approved, which would extend the hours for liquor sales to be from 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Sunday. And I'm not sure it's necessary to read all the reasons, it'll be, no.
I think that's got it, thank you. Moved, seconded by Counselor McFadden. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Item seven point two, we have report number 14 dash 025 from the Director of Corporate Administration, where the promotional video, now this was received for information at our last meeting, I don't think, I thought we had, we didn't table it, right, we just received it?
Yeah, we referred it to this meeting, so it's on the floor.
So, so it's on the floor, back in. Counselor Kenny?
I move that couns- oh, I move that the referred motion from the January 20th, 2014 meeting be defeated, and further that report number 14025 from the Director of Corporate Administration regarding the City of Dawson Creek promotional video request for proposals be received, and further that staff be directed to post a request for proposals for a Dawson Creek promotional video, further that the proposed specifications be approved.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Wilbur. Discussion. Counselor Parslow?
Just for my own education here, why is it necessary that the first motion be defeated? I mean, I'm in favor of the motion, but just, I'd like to understand why it needs to, the technical reasons why it needs to be defeated.
Thank you.
What do you?
That was actually done mostly as a courtesy, so it was easier for council, rather than-
Worded by?
Yeah, so just, it was cleaner to just defeat one and pass the other one.
Yep, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Kenny?
I just wanted to say that the Economic Advisory Committee there, we had a couple of members come to, come to a meeting and review the videos that are on our site right now, and it was agreed by all that they are outdated. They are outdated, there's a lot of infrastructure that's not visible on the video, it actually looks like a different city, so it really needs to be updated and brought up to today. And, and also the other videos that are on, on the site, we reviewed all of them, and actually they're all quite updated, and although I know that we're, we're looking at one video and that's, that's great, but we might want to take the older videos off.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Counselor Kenny said updated, I think she meant to say outdated, don't you?
Update the, did I say updated? It's Monday morning. Updated.
Thank you.
So further to that, are they going to be brought to council for some?
I think to me, I guess if I can offer my opinion on this in terms of where and how I see it progressing, I really, really think we need to spend this year understanding the economic development strategy for our community, and then follow some of that structural stuff behind it. This one for me, as I, as I read it, as I saw it, understand it, and as I'm moving forward with some of the messaging that we're trying to do as we promote the city, I think needs to be done, but I think the overall strategy that we take in terms of the planning for economic development, as it relates to our vision as a community, and how we put some of those tactics in place to meet those plans, I think need to, all of that needs to be revisited. But I think if this can be our first step, and then as we go through that planning process towards later this year and at the end of the year, hopefully will make some sense for us in terms of how we, what tools we need to meet the economic development strategy we put in place. That's kind of how I kind of think about it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Seven point three, we have Director of Infrastructure in regards to our local area service exempt roads. Counselor Malkinson?
I move that report number 14 dash 024 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding the local area service exempt roads policy be received, and further that council approve the policy subject to the required 30-day public comment period.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Discussion. Counselor Parslow?
I see that the roads that are exempt from this have been expanded. I was surprised to see that the first street was part of that. What's the thinking there? What's the thinking behind some of this expansion, particularly the first street link there?
Through, to administration, to Kevin?
Yeah, I'll get that to Kevin.
Jim?
Through your worship, the, the first street was included in the original policy.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, and it just, the map didn't show that, but I assume that, and maybe I shouldn't assume, but it was included because it was one of those major thoroughfares going up to the highway, and the city owns the property on one side, federal on the other, so through an LAS process, I think they'd both be exempt anyways. So there wouldn't be any, any, or generate any.
So it was an omission, and the idea is that that would be a major thoroughfare?
Yeah.
Okay, is there plans to have sort of traffic lights eventually at the intersection with the dual, you know, that part, that road there is going to be divided highway?
First and highway.
So how are we going to facilitate crossing, and is that first street going to be pa- is it the intention to have it paved?
Yeah, eventually first street is kind of in the, in the plans to have it paved with the Ministry of Highways 20 project. My understanding is that there's going to be some realignment on first, on the south side, and also eventually there will be signals there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Item seven four, we have a report from the fire chief in regards to self-contained breathing apparatus. Counselor Wilbur?
I'll make the motion that report number 14 dash 023 from the fire chief regarding the self-contained breathing apparatus be received, further that the request for quotation number 2014 dash 01 be awarded to Gullivan International for the purchase of 16 new SCBA's for $91,329.19 plus taxes.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Kenny. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Item seven five, we have Deputy Director of Infrastructure in regards to our sidewalk maintenance policy. Counselor Parslow?
Yeah, I move that report 14 dash 020 from the Deputy Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development re sidewalk maintenance policy be received, further that council approve the sidewalk maintenance policy as presented, subject to the 30-day public review period.
Thank you. Seconded, Wilbur. Ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Item seven six, Committee, Deputy Director of Community Services in regards to our youth care center lease. Counselor Wilbur?
I make the motion that report number 14 dash 017 from the Deputy Director of Community Services regarding youth care center lease be received, further that the attached lease agreement between the City of Dawson Creek and the Monkey See, Monkey Do preschool be approved for a two-year term with fees set at $1,000 per month, September 2014 to June 2015, and $1,050 per month, September 2015 to June 2016.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor McFadden. Discussion. And this is our facility in the building, the old library building beside our, the old pool, but have operated the preschool in that facility for a while. Thank you. Discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried, thank you. Seven seven, we have Deputy Director of Community Services regarding our South Peace Arts Society Classroom Lease. Counselor Parslow?
I'd like to move the report number 14 dash 022 from the Deputy Director of Community Services re South Peace Arts Society Classroom Lease be received, further that the attached lease agreement between the City of Dawson Creek and the South Peace Arts Society be approved for a two-year term ended December 31st, 2015, at the rate of $1,328.17 plus applicable taxes per year.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Kenny. Discussion. Counselor Parslow?
Just a comment, the, this has been a huge success for the group of artists who were, were having difficulty accessing the loft at the art gallery, and they now, it's become an expanded program, and they tell me it's, it's a really good base for them, it's accessible, and they really feel they have some ownership there, so it's revitalized that group that was originally formed by Edna McPhail, so they're much appreciative of it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. So now, we are a few minutes ahead of nine o'clock, and our item seven eight is going to take more than, my anticipation is more than a couple of minutes of conversation and discussion. I know you should never make assumptions, but I'm believing that, and so I'm wondering through to, can we, is it okay to move forward with our delegations a little bit ahead of time? To Tyra, Jim, for your advice?
Assuming that the delegates are in attendance, yes.
I'm assuming they are, so they, they look like they are, and that would certainly give us, as I say, I just hate to move into seven, eight, and then interrupt the conversation for the delegation. So are you all right with that? Yes? Thank you. So we'll invite the delegation, I'm assuming Jeff and Tanya Brewster from 911 Industrial Response are in attendance regarding Parking Bylaw 3123. They've provided council with a letter in advance in terms of the issue, and appear today to present on that, so, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Did everybody get a chance to read the letter beforehand?
Yes.
Yes? Good, thank you for that. So firstly, I'd like to introduce myself, Tanya and Jeff Brewster, we're the owners of 911 Industrial Response, and we own the house at 9408 Ninth Street in Dawson Creek here. The purpose of our participation today is, we feel a matter of broad community interest. We'd like to seek a mutual, mutually beneficial amendment to the City of Dawson Creek's bylaw currently prohibiting more than one commercial vehicle parked per residence. Company history, I'd like to give a little bit of history just so that you can understand our concerns with this and where we're coming from. We're a very professional quality medical EMS company for an industry, we provide full-fledged ambulance care, we hire the same level of care as you see on your city ambulances, so we've been operating since 2003, we started in Grand Prairie and we became registered in B.C. in July of 2004. We've grown from three units to over 60 units, and we currently service all of northwestern Canada. We operate out of many towns, we currently own homes for our staff in Dawson Creek and Grand Prairie. We have a very strong presence in the peace country, both in industry and in the community. Our future terms, currently we just purchased, we're in the process of purchasing a large shop in Grand Prairie, and we're looking to do the same in Dawson Creek next year. And, staff housing, the reason we need it is because our team members currently fly in from all over Canada, we hire people from all over Canada, make sure they're registered within the province of B.C. and Alberta to work in EMS.
So I, so, excuse me.
Was I that boring? Yeah, I don't need to hear that.
Does somebody have Cheryl's cell that we could just text her and just see if she-
Oh, I've got it.
Can I get her cell?
She's having trouble hearing.
Yeah, okay.
Or do you want to just, should we?
Just carry on.
Carry on.
Yeah, carry on.
Okay. So the reason we have the staff housing is to have, make sure they have a comfortable place to stay, staying in a hotel, and I'm sure some of you are, know how that feels when you're away from your family for long periods of time, it's not comfortable. So we buy the houses, we make sure they're set up comfortably, there's kitchens, everything so they don't have to eat in restaurants continuously. They come to work for two to three weeks at a time, we also supply a vehicle, and of course with registration requirements, the vehicle has to have our company name on it. We police internally to make sure that we have a minimum impact on the neighborhoods that we're parking in, and we did research prior to purchasing the homes that we currently do use for staff housing, to make sure that we had ample parking so that we weren't affecting the neighborhoods, we didn't want to have a negative impact. We do, as a company, bring a lot of cash into Dawson Creek with fuel, truck maintenance, car wash, hotels. We currently also, above the house that we currently own, we rent three more full houses for our people.
That's just in, just in Dawson Creek?
Just in Dawson Creek, yes. And then, of course, our staff are always buying groceries, supplies, and incidentals, so we, we do bring that to the community, as well as we volunteer at a lot of community events, but throughout the peace country, but specifically here in Dawson, we definitely feel that it's important to give back to the communities that you work in. And going forward, oh, we also, I wanted to mention, we have accommodations in town through Alberta and B.C., and we've never had to address an issue like this before, this formally. We have with parking, just at a ground level with our employees, making sure that they're always parking just where they're delegated. In the email, I did include what we set up as a company with the rules that we have internally that we enforce regularly, as well as a map for the Dawson Creek house of where they're allowed to park, making sure that we do not impact the neighborhood. And I included an email that we sent out just to show that we do police it regularly. And currently we're in Grand Prairie, Dawson Creek, Spirit River, Fort St. John, Grand Cache, Hinton, Valley View, Fox Creek, White Court, and Rocky Mountain House with zero impact on, or I guess, zero problems on parking. We do wonder where the complaint is coming from, as we, like I said, we're very careful with the parking. We also tried to, we've kept good contact with our neighbors here in Dawson, there was one gentleman that we actually shoveled his driveway a couple times this winter, just in good faith, and we work together with a neighbor that's behind us in keeping the alleyway open, so that we can park in the back and not at the front. This concern has also been brought to one of our customers, which again makes us wonder about the validity of the concern, if it is coming from our actual neighbors, just in that they would, our neighbors would not know who our customer is, and we were phoned with them with the same complaint, so I'm just wondering if it really is coming from the neighborhood. Again, we rented that houses in Dawson for years now, and the house is in Dawson, and we've never had a problem.
We've been renting accommodations in the Dawson Creek area for nine years, and we just found it was hard, there was a lot of times where we'd go to rent an accommodation or find a hotel, and it, there was, there was nothing available at the time, so we had to, we had to seek further action, that's when we decided to purchase the house ourselves and make sure, I mean, we went, we went around with our Realtor, I looked at hundreds of homes in a two-day period, and that was the one that suited the needs for the company the best.
Per- per-
the best. We made sure, again, it was the parking. I mean, there's a front and a back driveway. There's alley access. We made sure, I mean, as you can see, we make sure, if any mobile treatment centers do come into Dawson Creek, we try to make sure they park in the backyard. Most of the vehicles that do come into Dawson Creek are Ford Expeditions and F-150s. So they're not, they're not a giant vehicle. They're just, they are commercially registered, which is unfortunately the concern we're dealing with here today.
We do definitely understand that the city wants minimal commercial impact on residential areas. We get that. We, we live in Grand Prairie as well. So like in a town, we understand that. We, and we understand the city doesn't want businesses run out of a residential area. And again, we, we agree with that. We don't want to run our company out of there. It's just completely for housing and we agree that that should all be held up within the city. We recognize that Dawson Creek has a lot of, is an industrial-based town. There's a lot of oil, oil field, forestry and farming. There's a lot of commercial vehicles through Dawson Creek. And I know the bylaw, when we spoke with the bylaw officer, he said that not everyone gets ticketed. Only those who have received, only those where complaints have been received. So that's why we wanted to address possibly where the complaint could be coming from. So basically, for proposing, we would propose that the bylaw either be abolished, which is of course completely up to your discretion, or possibly impose a parking bylaw limiting impact on neighborhood with no more than three vehicles on the street related to one residence, or possibly allow the purchase of permits for commercial vehicles that are parked on the property or off the property, but permits per commercial vehicle for the household. I know, I'm, I'm a strong believer in running my company. If you have a problem, you, you need to come up with a solution before you bring the problem up. So that's why we wanted to offer these proposals. And I definitely want to thank you for your time and want to work together for an amicable solution that works for everyone. I'm recognizing that this does impact not just us as a company, but many people working in the Dawson area and living in the Dawson Creek area. And we, yeah, we respect any decision that you make.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel? Councilor Parslow?
Yeah, I have a, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I have a few questions just to clarify things in my head.
Okay.
So the nature of your business is industrial first aid?
Yes.
And you have, you own this home, this is in the, in the company's name?
It's actually in a separate company name.
Mine, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's registered to a company that you're associated with. Okay. And you rent three other homes?
We rent three other homes in Dawson Creek from another company, yes.
From another company?
Yes.
Okay. And how many employees sleep at this home? I didn't recede that in your...
There's, in a twenty-four hour period, there would be around eight. Now, that's going to be, you know,
Day shift, night shift.
Four to six day shift, four to six night shift. So set between, you know, six and seven in the morning, the first four will leave. They'll go to a location. Those four will then, the mobile treatment center stays out on lease. They would hop into an Expedition or an F-150, come back to town, get back to town and go to sleep. So as an average, there'd be four to six people at any given time.
And, and how many bedrooms are in this house?
That one, there is eight.
Eight bedrooms, okay. And are any of these employees related to you?
No.
No? What are the, what's the age range?
Twenty-one to...
Sixty.
Fifty-five.
Twenty-one to sixty, okay. And many, many fly into Dawson Creek or other communities with airports?
They fly into Grand Prairie, Alberta. They'll, they'll fly into Grand Prairie to pick up their unit and then go out from there. So they'll always come into Grand Prairie first. At the rate now, that is where all the business is being run out of. And then they disperse to all the different locations that we service.
And the vehicles that are parked there, you said are F-150?
Ford, half-ton pickup trucks.
Half-ton pickups?
Expeditions, as well as an MTC.
Suburban-style units.
MTCs means what?
It's a mobile treatment center. So it'd be a pickup truck with a, basically a truck camper in the back. And that's where your mobile treatment center would be located. And most of our jobs are twenty-four hours a day. So the MTCs aren't the ones that are driving back and forth. The times that they're parked there are usually on a job that's only a twelve-hour a day, a daytime job. So that person will be coming back to town to sleep.
And on average, because I'm sure there's lots of variability with this, but what time do people leave for work in the morning?
I would say, I would say as a general rule, six o'clock.
Okay.
And I would say return as a general rule between six and, six and eight P.M.
Okay. So they would be starting their vehicles up around five-thirty to warm them up?
Between, yeah, between five-thirty and seven, yeah.
Are these vehicles gasoline or diesel?
The crew change units are all gasoline.
Okay.
So the vehicles that are there ninety percent of the time would be gasoline. The MTCs are diesel.
Okay.
And they're all, they're all new vehicles. So they're not that loud and noxious diesel that you're used to hearing when it's first started.
Okay. In fairness to you, the reason I'm asking some of these questions is that I received a complaint from a citizen who I referred to the bylaw officer.
Yeah.
And it must be a different setup than yours.
Okay.
So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Wilber?
I'm just wondering, when you purchased this home, did you look into what our parking bylaw was for the resident?
We discussed with our, we had, we discussed with our Realtor exactly what was needed and what we wanted. And he was so excited for us to be a part of this community. He said that Dawson Creek is expanding. We understand the need for industrial growth. And that's, I mean, it was purchased under a company name. Everything was done with good intentions. We looked, we looked at every, you know, we looked at a whole bunch of other homes that were just, we're like, you know what? We'll impact the neighborhood because we have to park on the street here. Let's not, let's not, you know, there was, was that our first choice of a house? No. But it made the most sense for minimal impact in Dawson Creek. So yeah, I mean, everything that we felt, did we check the actual bylaw at that time? Nope. But nor was it brought to us by the Realtor or the lawyers that did the sale of the home. So we, we were honestly so shocked the day that we got that phone call, nine and a half months after we'd purchased the house and been staying there without any complaints. So we were, it was a real shock.
And when we brought it to the Realtor, after getting the tickets, he was floored as well. He did not, he was not aware that it was in place.
Okay. So, and I just want to, I, I kind of drove by a couple times just watching since I got your letter. So I've observed three MTC units parked
Yeah.
in the driveway that I could see didn't go around back. And then vehicles on the road as well. So how, how often is, is that? I mean, I, I haven't really seen any of your just trucks parked there. I've, every time I've gone by, there's been two or three MTC units actually parked.
In the driveway.
Um, they are parked, two in the front driveway and then one in the back. And then the rest of the vehicles are on the street. So I'm wondering if the complaint's not coming from that there's actually not just pickups parked there. You actually have MTC units. Another concern I had was that in your map, you show eight vehicles parked in the two driveways, three on the road, and yet you say you only have six and, you know, and try to stay off the road. So...
If, if, if there were that many vehicles to park, we do have eight bedrooms. So we have to make sure that the legend is there for if there was that amount of vehicles.
It does have an error. It does have an error.
Right.
In this whole process, I've realized it does have an error and it's been since fixed.
So on top of the, the three houses that you rent and the house that you own, how many hotel rooms are you also renting in Dawson?
Six.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, Your Worship, perhaps just for the information of the delegation. Your policy, well firstly, your regulations around this kind of parking are, have been in place continuously since nineteen ninety-six. So I can't speak to a real estate agent that doesn't know those regs. But a phone call to the city would have established that. Secondly, you have a policy of responding to complaint only on this type of infraction and the complaint must come from a neighbor. Prior to ninety-six, and actually you may remember from your last time on council, we used to do tours, in fact, council used to do tours. And a complaint could come from any citizen in the community, but you changed that regulation. So there has to be a complaint on file from a proximate neighbor, which is why you can have a situation where a company owns four premises and only one is the subject of complaint. It's a neighborhood standard.
Thank you. So, thank you. So for me, so the tip of the iceberg of what we're feeling in our community is a number of issues, exactly like what you guys are facing with businesses that are now coming into our community and establishing or attempting to establish themselves. And so for us, foundational for is quality of life for our residents and how you have that balance in your community about residential, peace and quiet, quality of life in your community, developing your business, community and the commercial components. And we're, we really want to do that, right, as a, as a community. And as Jim said, the, the complaints, the feedback we're starting to receive now in our community over the amount of on-street parking that's generated by the amount of rental accommodation in homes is what's driving it, right? So for us, the purpose of what we need to do is, and I got a Facebook site, I got it on the weekend, of a fed-up resident about the amount of, people are coming to their house and having to park a half a block and a block away just to get near their home, right? And so that's what you guys are feeling that today in terms of the impacts of what you're trying to do and develop your business into our community. And for us, it's about how do we ensure that we develop that community for our business as well as the residential component? So that's, I think, the, it is a residential-driven, complaint process that's driven. We don't go looking for it. So. Thank you for coming in today and we'll bring it back through to our business in terms of considering your request.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item six point two, our next delegation, I believe, are here. And this is the newest resident to our community in two thousand and fourteen. And so if they could come in and come up front, we've got a presentation to our, our new man. Our new man.
Hi, guys. Oh, my goodness. Come up front. So Mike and Ashley Weis are the proud, proud parents of our new boy, Kayden. Do I got that right?
Yes.
And a little eight-pounder. So a nice-sized rainbow trout. And he is a nice one. So it is, so, so obviously, knowing the Weis family for almost all my life and, and so it's a huge pleasure to present this to Mike and Ashley on the birth of their new year's boy to our community. He was born on January third, in Mitterida, two thousand and fourteen. Eight pound, fourteen ounce, twenty-one and a quarter inches. Kayden Michael Weis and the proud parents are Mike and Ashley. So congratulations, you guys. We're just so excited to have our new year's baby here today. And congratulations. And Kayden, everybody. Welcome, bud. And we got a...
Well, it's just a key word.
Yeah. So stairs are, welcome to the newest citizen. And a certificate entitled Kayden Michael Weis for a lifetime smoke pass of ten or five. So thank you guys so much for coming in today, Kayden. It's nice to meet you, buddy. We need somebody to do sign off shortly after you, oh, so come on. And thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I actually, how did I even do on the bat? Was I, did I get the exact everything?
I don't think so.
I was guessing the date and all that. Usually I'm deadly at that game. She must have started pushing too early.
Okay.
So...
Could we take a little short break?
Sure. We'll take a five-minute break and then come back to seven point eight. Back to order, please. So item seven point eight on our agenda is report number one-four-dash-zero-two-six, the Deputy Director of Community Services in regards to our exhibition grounds grandstand. Is that right? Councilor Parslow?
To put this on the table, as we sometimes do, I'm making the motion that report number fourteen dash zero-two-six, from the Deputy Director of Community Services re-exhibition grounds grandstand be received, and further that council direct that the repair or replacement of the grandstand seating be included in the two thousand and fourteen capital budget. Further that staff prepare reports showing options and estimated expenses for the restoration of the grandstands for council's review and consideration at the February the seventeenth meeting of council. And finally, that council direct the previous resolutions restricting capital investment at the exhibition grounds are no longer applicable.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Kenny. Discussion? Counselor Kenny first, McFadden and Malkinson.
This is a real tough one. But tough in one way, but then easy in another. Like this, this is the largest event we have in our community. We're known, you know, we're known across the country that this, what this event provides. And although I really didn't want to see any more capital expenditure money going out and including that in this year's budget, I, I don't see any way out of this. I, I think that we have to support this event and we have to support it for, for our city. And when you see the long list of organizations that are, that support this, the non-for-profit organizations that work, work the rodeo and, and work the exhibition grounds and like, it is truly, truly, truly a community event. And so I will definitely be supporting this motion.
Thank you. Counselor McFadden?
Good morning, Your Worship. I certainly agree with Counselor Kenny. My question is, this needs to happen and it needs to happen as soon as possible. Is there any way that this report could be done from staff prior to February seventeenth? And if the need be, I would certainly be amenable to having a special meeting to deal with it. I know that it's only two weeks away, but time here is of the essence. I mean, we, this has to be done by June or July and it's now February, March, April. So time is of the essence. So I'm wondering if that report could be done quicker than the seventeenth. And I know it puts a tremendous burden on staff. Thank you.
Jim?
Through Your Worship, it's possible. And we certainly, as you know, have not been able to do any work on it because of existing previous resolutions of council. So if today's direction is to work on it, we'll work as quickly as we can. And if there is something ready in time for a, for a special meeting, we'll canvass for, for availability of council.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson?
All right. I don't want to sound like a Grinch or anything like that here, but I, I suppose I'm a little less directly thinking when, when I, when I consider something like this. You know, I can't argue at all about the assertions that the exhibition itself is of foundational importance to the community, you know? It's, it's a wonderful event that is the greatest show in the piece. But, you know, it's, I'm, I'm not certain that it's, you know, the corporation, the city of Dawson Creek's event, you know? It's a, it's certainly a, a community event. And I, I suppose when called to reality, you'd need to, one would need to realize that it is a, a city event. But it's, you know, I, I wonder if, you know, any work was, or sorry, any work was put into assessing the grandstand that, you know, this roof was built over recently, you know? It's, it's, there's just, you know, a lot of, a lot of problems here. You know, we've got, I just, I, I just think that expectations are high in this situation. And I, I wonder if it's something that we'll be able to manage.
Thank you. Counselor Parslow?
Okay. Well, first of all, I'm, I'm making this motion for exactly the excellent sort of overview that Counselor Kenny gave as to why we need to do this. So I, I definitely stand behind this, this motion. But there's a lot of concerns I have. I, I noticed with some curiosity that in the resolution, the last part of it is, reads that council direct the previous... that council direct that previous resolutions restricting capital investment at the exhibition grounds are no longer applicable. So there, there has been some history, I guess, over difficult, difficulties with the facilities maybe at the exhibition ground that's led council to say, we're not going to put any more capital funding in there. So that's, that's history, and there are probably good reasons for that. I'm not here to question previous council's decisions. But I have, I have concerns about not just the grandstand, but the whole exhibition ground, let's say, capital investment that's gone on down there, the state of other buildings, et cetera. And it seems to me that the council needs to perhaps, what's the word I'm looking for here? Maybe we need to try to get a lease agreement that deals with maintenance issues, site visitations, so that we know what we're in for as it relates to maintaining that facility, and that we're not hit by surprises here. So no criticism intended, it's just wanting us to put this whole important operation on maybe a firmer footing, so there's not a surprise like we've just received, that we're forced into doing this time and time again, perhaps for other property or that's there, that's obviously not of the same significance that grandstand, but still might become a safety issue or a capital cost that... So I would like to put on the table for maybe future discussion, how we, our future relationship, do we parallel it with, for instance, how the city deals with the Mile Zero Parts Society, that there's a formal lease agreement and ownership of things and repair of things are all clarified? I mean, we, the Mile Zero Parts Society is in tomorrow, phase two of their long-term planning, where they have in a ten-year sort of view of development, maintenance, and all that sort of stuff, which is going to be presented to council at a future meeting, so all parties are aware of that. And I'm just wondering about that. But one comment that is related to this, directly to the wording in this recommendation, one of the things that always amazes me, I'm sure it's true in other communities, but I generally speak with certainty over this community, is that when there's a need, there's a great resolution by people to get things done. I'm thinking, you know, for instance, we had concerns about the future of the ski hill, and we had a bridge, and Kin Part washed away, and volunteers came through, raised about a million dollars in kind or cash, and we got the thing done. Now, I know that time is of an essence here, but is there an opportunity for this, and I'm reflecting here on Connie Patterson's letter about, you know, the depletion of their funds over the, what do you call it, emergent things that happened at the last fall fair, that a community group could volunteer to do this work as a fundraiser? I mean, ranchers, farmers, rodeo people are resourceful people. Is that an option that could be explored, and what is the opinion of staff on that option?
Thank you. Jim?
So through Your Worship, let me quote from the engineer's report. Quote, "Having worked on these type of facilities, we have found in the past that it is common that volunteer groups may assist in this type of repair, or local suppliers will provide materials in kind. Without knowing the specifics of what materials could be donated, how many people could help, or the qualifications of the workers, we could not consider that option when evaluating repair options. For the purpose of this preliminary investigation, we have assumed that the work would be done by a professional contractor purchasing new materials at market prices. While it may be possible to repair the planking, it is our opinion that this would not be a good investment when one considers the man-hours to complete these repairs, the age of the planking, required ongoing maintenance, and the apparent condition of the planks. It is our general conclusion that the seating, plywood, and walkway planks have reached the end of their usable lifespan. If you require us to consider this in detail to quantify the minimum repairs, we can do so. However, that will involve a significant amount of time to identify the exact repairs in each bay, analysis, and documenting the repair to establish a budget. For those reasons, staff is not recommending that option."
Thank you. Counselor Wilber?
I just wanted to say, I mean, today's the day, but everything runs its life, and those grandstands are older than me, so it's had a good run. But also, I want to say, you know, the groups that have looked after the grounds have done the best they could with the expertise and the ability they have, and they have replaced really bad stuff. So really, truly, the grandstands have run their life, and I just wanted also to be clear on the table that the groups that have been in charge have done, have done good work over fifty years, and ninety-one years of the exhibition being in our community. So I just want that out there. But I don't think we can really make a decision on anything until staff comes back with our options. What does it cost to replace the wood versus aluminum prefabbed? So I think that's our first step, and I think we need to do that, and then from there, move forward. And I think with, you know, rescinding and not putting money into that, I think that's a good move forward. I think as a community and as the groups involved, we need to come together and work together to keep this the greatest show in the piece and to have another ninety-one years of service in our community. So I think the time has changed, and I think we need to move forward. So I will be supporting this, and I'm looking forward to having the options and taking the next step.
Thank you. Further discussion? So I'm going to speak to it. The issue came to us through our insurance, who did an assessment on, always are doing assessments on our facilities as they manage and are responsible for the risks of our facilities in our community. We were required to get an engineer's report on this grandstands to ensure the structural integrity, that we could continue to use the facility, the infrastructure safely. That report's come back and said the wooden components of the structure are no longer usable, or in their opinion, should we continue to use them, or can we continue to use them? So that's the seating, the plywood, the stairs. The structural components of it aren't the issue. And the roof that they put on it aren't the issue, because it's a completely separate, self-supporting structure. It's the wooden components that have been there for years and years. And so from, certainly from our perspective now, we're in that position of saying, okay, we need to make a decision quickly and timely, because the Exhibition Association and the rodeo are entering into contracts for this year for the professional chuck wagons, for their tarp auction, for their advanced seat sales. The Rope and Saddle Club are into their negotiations with putting on the event. So I think honestly, from my perspective, we look at a piece of infrastructure that we have in our community, it's now reached its end of life. We can look behind us and say, you know, we've got lots of hindsight and lots of things that we could have done, but councils have prioritized things in capital in the past, and now we have to make a decision on that. And so from my perspective, I think it's absolutely important for us to ensure that the biggest issue to me, the biggest risk we face in this is time. We cannot not have this, if we, and if we make the decision to move forward with it, whatever the options are, it has to be completed by June or July. We cannot get into a situation where we move it forward, and it's not done by August one, or whatever our drop dead date is in it, for the, all of the components around the contract. And so from that perspective, I'm happy with the resolution that we've got in front of us. Get our cost structures in place in terms of, what are our options? What are the cost implications to that? Where do we find the funding for it in terms of our capital budget? And then we make the decision as soon as we can in terms of getting that process underway, if we decide to do that, and get it completed. And so, yeah, you want to plan, you want to try to make decisions that are in a planning process that you look forward to. And sometimes you've got to make decisions that come at you that are critical, and you don't have that opportunity to consider and plan, and you've just got to make the decisions. And that's why we're here. That's what we are doing on behalf of the residents. And from my perspective, I look at that rodeo, I look at that fair, that exhibition in August with great anticipation for our community, because it is the biggest single event that we put on in our community in a year, and it has a huge impact on our reputation all across Western Canada and North America. And we're the only jurisdiction in British Columbia that hosts the professional wagons. And we're the only, have that opportunity. And I think when we lose it, or if we ever lost it, we wouldn't get it back. And so we move forward with it on that basis, and move forward in a proactive, positive manner in terms of making a good decision of how we're going to ensure we continue it for, as Counselor Wilber said, another ninety-one years. And that's all I have to say about that right now. Counselor Parslow?
Call the question.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Parslow, sorry, do you want to?
No, I'm in favor. I just wanted to add another comment after the...
Go ahead.
So can we perhaps put on a future agenda this issue of our relationship with the Exhibition Society and how we might formalize that?
Sure. So Tyra?
Sorry, just for the benefit of the recording secretary, I understand that Counselor Malkinson was opposed?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't see that, or I didn't notice that you didn't get it. So we'll move that forward, Counselor Parslow, and we'll bring that back in terms of, through administration and our good folks to bring that recommendation back to us. Thank you for that. So item eight is our bylaws. Anything? Item nine, sorry?
Sorry, no bylaws, Your Worship.
Thank you. So under my mayor's business, I've got a couple of things I wanted to bring forward to today. The first one is the, we've talked about the meetings we've had over the last couple of months with the developers, the investors, the realtors, as it related to the development of the community in regards to our subdivision development, both residential, commercial. So now really, first, I want to say to council, we've had probably seven or eight of these meetings. It's been, they've been individual meetings with these folks. I really appreciate council taking the time to do that, because from my perspective, I think it's just been extremely worthwhile and valuable. And so I met with administration last week, and we're going to bring forward a report with some recommendations and some discussion, topics of discussion as a result of that. I think we've completed a meeting with all of the ones that we found we could meet with. The issues that we heard within those meetings were probably two or three, really a huge, a huge compliment to Kevin and his staff within our, his area, in terms of the expertise, the quality of service they offer, and how they provided that. And that was a huge compliment to our community and to our staff, I think, in terms of it was consistent in how good that department was to work with as they're moving through the development process. We heard from all of them about the impacts of our OCP and the zoning bylaws as it relates to RS1, and in RS1, how we moved that allowance for in-law suites, companion suites, carriage house, and the different components there, with councils' hope that it would add some opportunities for density in our community and allow the opportunity for people to develop an in-law suite within their single-family home as a mortgage helper, or different aspects to it. And then through RS2, in terms of allowing the suites that have evolved through that process. And so we've heard that from the developers, and we've heard that from the contractors, and we've heard it from the realtors, that that's driving our market now today. That's driving the development in our community in terms of the magnitude of development that's occurring in our community with the suite component. And so we've had that conversation, and we're going to ask Jim and Kevin to now bring that forward in terms of some components for council that we can consider and understand those in terms of what they're doing. One, to our community, is it what we want? Is it how we want our community to move forward? And for council to be able to have that conversation and discussion. The impacts that follow from there around parking, and we heard that today from one of our delegations, and we've heard it from community members in terms of the impacts of parking, both in residential and how that's impacting them, so we'll include that as a component in it. And then some components around the snow removal that are impacted by our parking. So we're going to work on that report. I've talked to administration, and they're going to bring that back for us on our February seventeenth meeting. We'll have that ready for council to bring forward and have some discussion so that we can move it forward. Item number two, as I attended the BC, the Premier's BC Natural Resource Forum in Prince George, it was a two-day event, really, really well-done. I think it's the eleventh or twelfth year of that conference in Prince George. It was driven in an effort to bring together all of the natural resource industries across the province, but primarily in Northern BC. Huge presence by the premier, large number of cabinet ministers, as well as the caucus. So it's a great, great message sent by the government of BC of how important that is to the economy in the north. Industry were very well-represented across the board, forestry, mining, tourism, the oil and gas industry, the business community. So it was very, very well-attended, as well as then by the municipal leaders and the First Nation Aboriginal communities as well. It's evident in our province, both by the meeting I had attended at the Vancouver Board of Trade and last week, of how critical the development of the natural gas industry in Northern British Columbia is, both in terms of Northeast BC as well as Northwest BC, of what it means to the province, the anticipation of what it's meaning, both in terms of the development for our economy as well as the development within our communities. We saw an announcement when we were there that I found a little bit interesting and good, but they've upgraded, upgraded, the province has upgraded Highway ninety-seven and Highway sixteen to Schedule A, and are going to add a fair amount of money, and I think I heard two or three million dollars in maintenance, just as a result of the development of the, the impacts of those corridors for the resource sector. And so it's really incumbent upon us, I think, to ensure that we continue those conversations and discussions with the province as it relates to the development of the infrastructure within our community, both within the community directly as well as outside, as we see the increased activity in our community and region with that. But the message from the Natural Resource Forum was the emphasis on natural gas and LNG. It's LNG, but it's liquefying it over there, and it's natural gas here. And I think that's a message we need to continue to emphasize, because the province and everyone seems to latch on to the LNG projects, the big capital plants, projects that are building plants on the West Coast, forgetting about the significance of how big it means in our region and our area. So it was very well-done, and it was a good conference to be at, and I ran out of business cards again. So that's a good thing. Yes, Counselor Parslow, sure, absolutely.
I'm sure you don't make errors, so I'm taking this, Highway...
I always make errors.
Highway ninety-seven was included in that?
Ninety-seven South.
Ah, so, from Prince George.
From Dawson Creek to Prince George, I think it was.
Actually, from, from where the federal government takes over responsibility for ninety-seven at one oh one or somewhere around there, all the way to Prince George is upgraded now to a Class A schedule.
Good, I missed that. I heard the Highway sixteen, that's great.
The other thing I started, and I started trying to, as part of the whole economic development strategy for me, in terms of, it's escalating, raising the profile and the image of the City of Dawson Creek as it relates to our profile in a number of components around advertising. So I've taken the opportunity, I've done some interviews with some of the natural gas magazines. We're moving forward with the promotional opportunity within Northwest Business Magazine. It's a great magazine that gets attention all across Western Canada, and we've got an editorial that we put together, and we're promoting it in the community with our business community to try to get them supporting and advertising as well. And really excited about it, because I think it's been a really good opportunity to raise our profile in that regard. And the last thing I got called on last week, I think on Wednesday or Thursday, and I was interviewed, and we're, there's a magazine or a company out of Nova Scotia who are doing, they do articles and documentary-type articles on companies all across Canada and communities all across Canada, and so they've heard about what's going on, and they're going to do an article on the City of Dawson Creek. It's about three hundred and seventy-five thousand subscriptions. It's a lot more digital than it is actual print, but they're going to do a feature article on the City of Dawson Creek, and interviewed me last week, and they're going to do a follow-up in the coming month to get ready for it. So I think that's just so cool, that we're getting that kind of attention, not only regionally and provincially, but across the country. And finally, the budget process, and so we're starting today in terms of the... And so we're starting today in terms of this afternoon. We got our first kickoff with our CFO and administration to begin the budget process. We've all had now the information preliminary to start that. I'm excited about the opportunity to begin those processes for our community in terms of getting the budget discussions and public consultations underway. And so I just wanted to raise that to the media as well as to the public that we really hope to engage the community as much as possible in terms of getting that input and interaction in terms of the directions that we're setting for our community in terms of those budget consultations and discussions. And it's such an important conversation for us as we set the future for our community with those financial implications for it. So I just wanted to raise that very quickly. So I'll give that to anybody who has any questions or comments. Councillor Parslow?
Yes, good, good stuff, that's my first comment. The second is nothing to do with what you've said, although maybe it is linked somewhat. And here I'm just maybe having a seniors moment, okay, so forgive me. There's somewhere in some documents, and I was, I may be totally confused here, and it's all to do, I guess, with promoting the city and also helping with communication. Where is the notion of, which I am excited about, the developing of pod, an app for the city of Dawson Creek? Is that, where did I see that?
Oh, so we had brought that forward with the snow removal and budget and all that stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Jim?
Your Worship, were you going to bring up the delegation?
Yes, thank you.
The, your delegation asked you to consider either entirely abolishing the restrictions regarding the commercial parking in residential zones or as an alternative, allow it on private property but not on the street? Or as a further alternative, allow it by purchase of permit?
Thank you. You know, there's, can I speak to, I'm going to speak to it quickly just before I look for a motion, but I think there's so many components to this in terms of what we see in terms of our development of our community, how we're now transforming into a community that's going to have some implications like this in the future of how it impacts the development of our community with respect to the industry that we're seeing coming to us, the availability and the access to what we do for those industries and those businesses. We've got the development report coming. It's going to have some issues around parking in it in terms of some implications to that. So my nervousness today in terms of saying, yeah, we're just going to completely ignore it. I think there's some real solid conversation and discussion, consideration for us in terms of that and how we move it forward. And that's just kind of the way I'm, as I think about it, you want to develop your residential, your commercial, your zoning, you want to have that. And then there's the implications around that. So how you develop your business community and then the implications for our residents and the peace and harmony and quiet enjoyment of life and how that interacts with and interacts with business today. We're seeing that and not just with business, but people who are, the young guy that's out there buying a home and is renting it to his rooms to his two buddies, that is another component that fits within that model. And so I think there's a whole big discussion there for us. Councillor Wilber?
I think part of that, some of the concerns that arise for me is admittedly that this company has four rooming houses, which is another bylaw that, you know, we don't allow that. So my other concern is openly, the gentleman owns the house as another business. So does that business have a business license in Dawson Creek? I mean, there's a can of worms here and I just have an issue with this. There, it's their due diligence as a business to find out what our bylaw is. And we have other very reputable industrial medics companies that have bought property, that have bought commercial property and are running their business out of there. To me, these people are running a business out of homes, not just one, homes, and not following our bylaws. And I take issue with that. And I think also, where do we draw the line? So if we change it for them, then what about everybody else? This is not, I mean, this is isolated that it's, a complaint has come forward, but we have many, many homes in our community that there's many, many vehicles that are commercial vehicles that are there. So this is a huge can of worms, but I mean, my perspective looking at this, we have a bylaw. They should have checked what the bylaw was and I don't think they should have three, four, or five MTC units parked and their neighbors cannot park in front of their home or get in their driveway. That's a huge issue.
Thank you. So I wasn't, from my perspective, I was, I was, I don't want us to change, I don't think we should be changing a bylaw at this point. We need to understand the implications of it, right? And so, sorry, I'll clarify that because that was my intent. Councillor Parslow?
Yeah, my understanding of your comments is we need to engage in a conversation about the implications of this sort of business. On the one hand, we want to encourage business to establish here. But we must recognize, I think Councillor Wilber's alluded to this, and is that this complaint is what, that prompted all this is certainly, has been formalized, but there's an awful lot of people talking in the community about this matter. And as the man knows and staff know that one individual, I think, will be moving forward. There shouldn't be a second formal complaint, but I think that's just the tip of the iceberg. I think residents are moving, buy a house in a residential area. And as the person said to me, my, my street isn't, is being converted from a residential street to a motel street. And that's sort of rang a chord to me. So it is difficult. I think we need to reflect on ways forward that we have a balance there. But certainly the onus, I think, on a new business who comes to town is certainly to engage in due diligence about this matter. And as our staff said, you know, a phone call to City Hall would certainly have pointed them in the right direction as it relates to the bylaw. So I'm not saying there's anything wrong with our bylaw either. I'm just saying though, I want the city to enjoy the benefits of businesses establishing here, but I want the residents to be safeguarded.
Thank you. Councillor Malkinson?
Well, I agree with Councillor Parslow and Councillor Wilber. I think that the bylaws, you know, the principles that the bylaw is founded on are, you know, very well, very well-founded. I agree with them, with them completely. It's, well, it's, I think, up to us, I suppose, is the next step going ahead to make sure that they're adhered to, you know. I strongly believe that, you know, our residential areas are, well, at least we should be trying to steer the ship towards our residential areas being geared towards use for families. You know, that's, that's what I, that's what resonates strongly with me. And I think that that's sort of the idea that our bylaw and other bylaws try to uphold. And I think that's the way we should continue to be headed.
Thank you. So the, one, that one other comment for me is what we're seeing is we're not just seeing companies buying homes and turning them into rental accommodation. We've got people within our community who are renting out two or three or four of their bedrooms as a huge opportunity to generate some revenue. And so, you know, it's, the tough part for us is the demand for a cheap, a reasonable place to sleep is driving a huge opportunity for people to make money. And so our opportunity of how we're going to try to regulate that. I absolutely get it in terms of how the difficulties for our bylaws and bylaw enforcement and the quiet enjoyment of a residential neighborhood. But what's going on in terms of the demand by industry and the investment market and the opportunities is driving this, this situation for our community. So I think the first step is absolutely that, right? We've got some bylaws. We say, here's how we're going to make sure we try to manage it and manage it on behalf of our residents and the residential. And then move forward with it in terms of how can we ensure that we do the best things for our community that it drives our community to looking what we hope it will be in twenty or thirty years? Councillor Parslow?
I'm just wondering here, how do we move this, this conversation forward? Some of the things I've heard, and it's not, nothing to do with this particular issue. So I want to clarify, everyone to be clear about this. This is another issue, but the ones I've had some conversations, some of the, and there may be additional factors for a bylaw. Or maybe these things are already covered in our bylaw. I don't have the bylaw memorized. So some areas, I'm told, trucks start up, they're diesel trucks. They start up four, four-thirty in the morning. Diesel fumes waft the residential area. The trucks have loud music being played, no occupant, they just started up and then the, so there's noise issues. There's what some people consider to be noxious fumes issues. And there's parking and access to their home issues. And there's also safety issues, as well as other issues such as, you used the expression, Councillor Wilber, the boarding house, was it? A rooming house issues. So I'll just throw those out and they may well be covered off in our existing bylaw, but I just wonder how we move forward in reviewing this bylaw and finding that balance. I mean, imagine the staff is looking for some direction from council.
Your Worship, we have direction.
Okay.
We have existing bylaws. They exist until you do something to change those bylaws. That process would need to go in your strategic list because we're now talking significant new initiative, more public consultations, more expert reports. There is a finite number of these initiatives and programs that you can add without adding resourcing. So those concerns, for instance, there is no anti-idling bylaw in this community. You've talked about it in the past, you haven't enacted one. And it doesn't matter if you're a diesel truck going to the oil field or a passenger vehicle going to the mall, there's no anti-idling restrictions in the community. There is noise restrictions enforced by ourselves or by the RCMP. All of this would be neighborhood standard. My neighbor has a welding truck that is a commercial vehicle that is over one ton that he parks there. He starts it up at two or three in the morning in order to go to his pipeline jobs. It has a loud stereo on it. I love the guy. He's got a lovely wife, he's got three kids. He looks after my place when I'm gone. I look after his when he's gone. I wouldn't turn him into bylaw. Nobody on my street would turn him into bylaw. It's a neighborhood standard.
For me, I hope that with this one component and conversation we're going to have, I think as we move forward with our zoning component about how and what we've done with our investor developer contractor meetings, will get us into some conversations about has-to with respect to density, parking and components like that. It's going to have that conversation. Maybe that's where we begin it and understand of what we're, what we're moving forward with and what we're going to impact perhaps the community with. And it's the most significant thing we do, I think, as council is direct that view of what your community is going to look like in the future, right? Councillor Malkinson?
Your Worship. If I remember correctly, reading in an email in the past, or maybe it was some information that's presented today that currently the enforcement side of the bylaw or further action that could have been taken, hasn't been taken until the delegation has had opportunity to express themselves. If, well, ought council resolve to see things continue here?
Yeah.
Again, Your Worship, you don't have to resolve to have the status quo continue. It continues until you resolve otherwise. Enforcement's been held in abance for this meeting.
Yes.
If out of this meeting comes a direction to review that bylaw with the possibility of changes that would enable that use, enforcement will continue to be deferred. It is not, it's considered in law unfair for council to enforce while they are considering the possibility of doing away with the regulation. So if that's your will, if your intention is that you might make all of this lawful, you would need to direct that and then we wouldn't enforce. If you don't direct anything, tickets are starting again this afternoon.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
Jim's use of the word lawful has prompted another question, I guess I have. And it may be, may be a clear answer, it may need to be researched. But should we, you know, we know that complaints are driven by, so by law, sort of enforcement's driven on a complaint, response to a complaint. And staff has said, you know, you, it's sort of community, neighborhood standards. Suppose in a neighborhood standard results in some bylaw action and it proceeds through the process. Is there any lead or precedent for a city council to have, that supports a city council having neighborhood standards rather than a citywide standard? If you understand what I'm getting at, in fairness to Jim.
Through Your Worship, the general belief in professional administrators is the court cases are, they're all over the map, of course, because everyone has their own fact pattern. But it's generally considered that you would have to establish a zone. You can, there's no limit on how many kinds of zones you can have. You could have fifteen different residential zones, some of which allowed this use, some of which didn't. But in terms of your current situation where it is universally applied throughout residential zones, you would have to enforce every time you had a complaint. You, the bylaw establishes the rights and privileges of the neighborhood. So a single person, it's not a neighborhood consensus, it's not a referendum in the neighborhood. Anyone in the neighborhood can choose to have your standards applied. But you don't apply them unless someone chooses to do that. That is a resourcing issue as well as a philosophical issue. So partly that was councils of the past saying, we have no interest in being big brother. We're not putting surveillance cameras on every block. We're not patrolling every block. We're, we'll respond to complaints philosophically because we prefer to have a lighter rather than a heavier hand. But also in terms of resourcing. Because what I can tell you is because of this delegation and how it's going to be covered in the media and how it's already appearing on social media, it's not just real estate agents that don't know the rules. Lots of residents don't know the rules and they'll now find that they are entitled to complain about the commercial operation next door, and they will. So bylaw is going to have a very busy few weeks sorting through all those complaints. If you were going to actually enforce a universal standard regardless of whether you got a complaint, you'd have to up resourcing significantly. And that's another thing that led council not to do that.
Thank you. Councillor Parslow?
Well, I'm not in favor of having open season. Until we've got, had some further conversation, I would definitely want the existing bylaw to be applied. But I do think we do need to have a conversation.
Thank you. So we don't need to do anything with the letter. We've received it for information. And the only thing we would need to do is if we were proposing to consider or make changes to the request and/or the bylaws. Thank you for that. Diary?
Nothing new on the diary, Your Worship. We have, there's ongoing work at the Calvin Crook Center. I don't, do you have some?
Yes, they do.
Okay. Duncan might as well give us what we have. I mean, it's, boards are being nailed.
Morning. Yeah, as Jim said.
There isn't, without getting into the nitty-gritty details, there isn't a lot to report back. Hagy Construction's in there, they're fully mobilized. I walked through the building last Thursday. The first month, they generally spent getting familiar with the building and looking at the wall studying. I believe everybody's been through that building and seen the basement, what was remaining. So they've gone through that studying, they've engineered it. And I mean, a couple of the highlights, the archives, they've insulated the exterior walls. They've started drywalling the exterior walls, they've laid flooring. They've put T-bar ceiling in. In the dance studios, they've poured concrete and leveled them out. And again, T-bar ceiling and engineered the steel studying. You know, without again getting into the details, the architects and engineers Um, you know, without, again, getting into the, the details, uh, the architects and engineers will be up this Thursday for our, uh, our monthly site meeting. And, uh, they'll provide some guidance on a couple of, uh, details that, uh, Hegy's looking for information on. And, uh, we've locked down the commissioning agent from the first phase. He's gonna come back and complete, uh, the remaining work. They, uh, had been out of it here for almost a year, so to get them back in is, is good news. They're familiar with the building and they're familiar with what's remaining. And they'll be able to get, to guide the new contractors and the existing contractors on the project.
Thank you, Duncan. Any questions? Council Parzl?
What does a commissioning agent do?
A commissioning agent, uh, they come into the building, um, they're usually involved throughout the entire process, but, uh, their, most work is done in the, the finishing parts of the project, and they'll, uh, they'll come through and they'll test all the systems, the building systems, primary electrical and mechanical. And they'll make sure, for instance, that, uh, venting isn't closing when, uh, exhaust is turning on or that the control system, the programming is done properly and we're getting our energy efficiency initiatives and, and so forth. Was completed at the multiplex, um, after the building was, uh, constructed. And there was a, a marked difference between when the building was done and when that commissioning was done, in particular, the, the smells in that building and just a lot more control of that system.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Duncan. Any other questions? Thank you. Item eleven, the consent calendar? Nothing? Strategic priorities chart? We're working on that and underway. Question and answer period? Nothing? Committee of the whole, no, media question period? Will?
Uh, yes, I have, uh, two, uh, questions, uh, right now. Um, the first is that, uh, I guess, uh, in the mayor's business, uh, you mentioned, uh, the idea of the, uh, Nova Scotia Magazine that's, uh, doing the, uh, article on the, uh, city, and I just wanted to know, um, oh, sorry, what? Do you, do you have any idea what the name of that magazine is?
I don't at this point. I could get it for you. Sorry, Kathleen, do you have the name?
Business and Focus.
Oh, Business and Focus? Okay, great. Um, the other question is, uh, in terms of the grandstand, and again, this might just be, be asking us the question. Um, but, uh, I guess, uh, right now, I guess because of the, uh, the no occupancy, uh, sign that's being placed on, on the grandstands, is it safe to assume that, uh, basically the, uh, because of the engineering reports and such, that it has been deemed, uh, sort of unsafe to, to sit on these, uh, to, these, uh, these planks and whatever? Is that kind of fair to say?
Right.
Okay.
No, you can't use it.
All right, yeah, cool. All right, that, that's all ahead.
Thank you.
I had one question still, about, uh, process. So, uh, for seven-five, the sidewalk maintenance policy is going to the community for thirty days. Um, after the thirty days, what happens? Is it, uh, just put in place or you, it's brought back to council?
Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, um, the proposed policies, council adopts them as a proposed policy, they go for public comment. If no comment is received, uh, then they become the policy. Uh, if any comment is received, it comes back to council to consider the policy, or the comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Jill?
No, thanks, Joe.
Andrea?
Good.
Good. Thank you. Uh, we got no close today?
Uh, no. Uh, you'll be adjourning, but then you have your budget meeting in the afternoon.
Yes.
And I wonder if Council Schuman has been able to hear better with this new setup?
I absolutely have been able to hear everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, you guys have one, so make sure somebody calls me.
We will. Thanks, everyone.
Motion to adjourn.
I wanna make that motion. Cheryl.
Wilbur, Malkinson, all in favor, opposed, carried. Oh, sorry, Schuman, Malkinson. Caller, uh, meeting to order this afternoon on our, uh, budget meeting of city council. Um, the first item on our agenda this afternoon is, uh, item two, and we're gonna review the, uh, report from, uh, our chief financial officer. So, Council Parzl?
I'd like to move that report number fourteen dash zero-two-one from the chief financial officer. Read two thousand and fourteen draft one budget report be received. Further, the council accept and approve the two thousand and four financial plan draft one as presented. Subject to changes required from the public consultation process.
Thank you. Seconded by Council McFadden. So, um, I think at this point, if we can, uh, we'll move through to the report and turn it over, sorry, Council Malkinson?
Your worship, maybe just a technicality on the, on the recommendation itself. I, I do remember, um, a couple of years ago, us, uh, just receiving the, uh, financial plan for information before, uh, discussing it, before taking the second draft out to the public. What, uh, is my mind, uh, addled here, or, or are we, uh, or have we, uh, just, uh, approved the plan?
Uh, no, you made a motion to that effect. Now you will discuss that. And you will either pass that motion at the end of the meeting, or you will have amended that motion.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, it's just to get it on the floor for discussion.
Thank you.
So I never heard any, any of that conversation except for Jim.
You can't hear me, Cheryl? Oh, you probably can hear me now, eh? No?
No.
I'm not gonna do it.
So, Councilor McFadden?
Uh, Cheryl, can you hear me okay? Sorry. Uh, first, uh, my congratulations to Shelley and staff for putting this together. It's a, it's a great report. I'd like to go to page three. Is this what we're doing now?
Sure. So, um, I was hoping first, before we go into it, that we give it to Shelley and, uh, be able to, uh, give her the opportunity to lead us through the report in terms of some of the key components around the report that, uh, we should have, uh, first for information, and then that'll hopefully guide us into our conversation and discussion.
Sure, that's fine. Thank you.
So, Shelley?
Thank you, your worship. Councilor Schuman, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear. Thanks, Shelley.
We turned on the speaker, that's what happened.
Oh, perfect.
So, the package before you is, uh, presented, uh, much in the same format as previous years in that, um, you have a budget report and then the appendices provide all the background information on the detail to the amounts in the budget. So, just to go through the report, uh, briefly, um, it starts out with highlighting, um, some of the more important items that council has identified through its council meetings in the last year. Um, securing provincial and federal funding, including fair share renegotiation, and, uh, looking into federal funding for the sewer trunk line. And I'm just gonna go through these items, and if council, uh, chooses to change, um, probably the key items, that'd probably be a good time, um, to bring them up before we go into the next, um, items in the report. There is increased use of fair share funding for capital upgrades, specifically the capital allocation. Um, for two thousand and fourteen is six million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred, or forty-nine point seven percent. And the rest, six point two million, is for the operational budget. Now, this is based on the fair share estimate because we have not, uh, yet received the, um, final number from the regional district. So, pending that, um, we'll have to come back to council, uh, if there's an increase or a decrease, if it changes substantially. Also, uh, we're preparing to continue the public consultation on water security phase two and have the discussion around the snow plowing and removal policy review. Also, approved in two thousand and thirteen was the fiscal gap work plan. So staff is going to be working on preparing presentation material and, uh, going forward with a public consultation on the fiscal gap. And council is committed to completing a number of major capital projects, including the Calvin Creek Art Center, sewer trunk line, and the Loran Water Reservoir. So those are the key, key work items, um, that came forward when preparing the document. As well, um, the first budget meeting is, uh, a lot of, um, a lot of work is done on, um, tax rate setting or proposals for tax rates that are put before council. And, uh, the recommendation from staff is to keep the residential tax rate the same as in two thousand and ten at five sixteen and to lower the commercial rate down to the commercial, the major, and the light industrial tax rates to sixteen seventy-five, down from seventeen dollars and twenty-five cents. Also, no new services are proposed for two thousand and fourteen. Your worship?
Yes?
One of the councillors has a question.
Sorry.
Just, uh, how you, how procedure stuff, um, can we comment, uh, as, uh, as our good financial officer here is making a presentation page by page, or how do you want to do it?
So I was, I was hoping that Shelley was gonna give us a highlight, uh, and then, and then we can start into having, uh, some of the detailed conversation. I, I thought that we could do that on that basis.
And this first page basically describes all the highlighted items, like tax rate setting, um, no new services for two thousand and fourteen, and, um, a very robust capital plan, twenty-four point eight million. Carryforward spending is ten point nine, and new spending is proposed as thirteen point nine. And all the capital project worksheets are put before council, um, so that you have time to look at all the projects. And if you have any questions, to come back to staff on that. New debt proposed is five point eight million, two point eight for road and sidewalk upgrades, and an additional three million for the sewer trunk line. Now, last year in the two thousand and thirteen financial plan, we had five million for the sewer trunk line. That did not go out for electoral approval yet, so as the cost of the project went up, uh, the borrowing has to be, um, equivalent to that. So, uh, the total on that project is eight point five, and that's dependent on, uh, the city's success or on, um, going to the federal government for funding. If we get funding, of course, we won't need the borrowing. And then also to maintain sufficient surplus to ensure long-term sustainability and flexibility. And, um, that basically speaks to, um, any surplus at the end of the year is used as a funding source to the next year, and we want to, uh, ensure that there is enough surplus left over to allow for flexibility or contingencies, that kind of thing for council, so. And, um, then the report goes in and outlines, in each appendix, what information is contained there. So if anybody's interested in a particular, uh, part of it, that's where you go to, to get all the detail. I'm not gonna go through the whole report 'cause it's thirty pages long. I hope that everybody read it and it was understandable, but basically it, uh, I said to the mayor before, five pieces. You set your tax rates, tax revenue plus fair share and other revenue is your funding source for operational spending as well as capital spending. And, um, putting money aside for, as I just said, contingencies and flexibility. And then there's a lot of detail on a lot of projects that, if anybody's interested in, we can, uh, we can talk about. But, uh, Dawson Creek is in a very fortunate position in that, um, the assessments are increasing, the investment climate is strong, and, um, we have new inventory coming on. And, um, so that, uh, that assists in the funding that is needed for maintaining services as well as, uh, the capital infrastructure that's necessary to support those services, so. That's pretty much it on a high level.
Thank you, Shelley. Thank you for that. And so first, from my perspective, I just wanna say that, um, when I read the report that Shelley provided to us and gave us this, uh, first of all, that she's reviewed the high level, uh, overview of it, um, there's some real strong signals in our financial, uh, report for two thousand and fourteen moving forward that I think we should take as being significant. From, from my perspective, and the first one being, uh, ninety percent of the fair share allocation in two thousand and thirteen being utilized for, or ten percent being utilized for capital, and in two thousand and fourteen, that'll be, uh, almost fifty percent. And that's a huge swing for us as a community to be able to have that plan for that, uh, funding in the future. And I, I just am so pleased to see that as a first component and really appreciate that. And so there's a whole, all kinds of discussions that we can have and are going to have with this, but I really appreciate, uh, first to Shelley and to the administration for be, beginning the process for us, uh, from that perspective. So, Council Parzl?
Yeah, well, I, I agree with your comments there very much, uh, mayor, but I just, my first question was, how was it achieved? How, how was this swing from ten percent to, um, fifty percent, almost, achieved? I, I know all of the new increase in fair share was going to be allocated to capital, that accounts for some of it, but just in a very broad stroke, I don't need to find, but where were some of the key elements that enabled this to happen?
Uh, so one of the things that I've tried to stress in the, in the past is that revenue is revenue. Doesn't matter if it's taxation or fair share or gaming. And, um, so in that context, um, last year had a big amount going to operational and a small amount going to fair share because we allocated gaming. And in that gaming, there was just about two million dollars of, uh, gaming funds, some from surplus and some from the current allocation. So, that gaming, if you say it's allocated to, uh, capital, you take that off the transfer. So, every year, a transfer goes to capital. And, um, this year, because the gaming is, is not being used as a part of the transfer, your fair share allocation can go up. As well, we have, uh, added taxation in two thousand and fourteen, and we did have surplus that came forward. So because we had increased surplus and, uh, the added taxation, you basically go from a three point five to a six point, uh, one allocation. So, it was not difficult to achieve, it's just how you integrate, um, the revenue, um, in the plan. And I've often spoken in the past about the integration, the interconnectedness, and as you change one, it changes the other. So, this is just, um, it, it basically worked that way, and, uh, mayor and council had been specific in that, that fair share allocation had to be increased into the capital component, so.
Thank you. Council McFadden?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I agree with the, uh, increase in fair share allocation of capital. That's just a good news story, uh, as far as I'm concerned, and thank you, Shelley, for doing that. The commercial industrial rate, uh, down to sixteen seventy-five. Can you just, you remember historically, what was that, three or four years ago? Was it twenty-one or twenty-eight or, uh, off the top of your head? I know it's, uh, relevant perhaps, but I'm just curious.
We've got it better than off the top of your head. We actually have a page for that.
Yeah, and we're just gonna find it.
All right, well, I haven't got that far yet.
Yeah.
I misplaced my glasses yesterday.
Yeah, just hang tight for a sec because we do have the historical information in the package. So on page sixty-two, you can see in two thousand and six, it was twenty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. And then in two thousand and ten, it came down to nineteen dollars and fifteen cents, and it's been reduced, um, was it reduced a dollar in two thousand and twelve? And then twenty-five cents last year, and, uh, fifty cents is proposed this year, so.
Thank you. Yeah, that's something that, uh, the public, especially the business community, needs to know that it has been going down consistently for the last several years. And I'm wondering, uh, if I may just continue correctly, your worship. You're proposing new debt of five point eight million, but you're also proposing that we'll have an ending surplus of eighteen, almost nineteen million. Why would we borrow five point eight if we have a nineteen million surplus? Certainly we could get by with fourteen in surplus. Couldn't we not borrow any more money?
Um, through your worship, there's, uh, a few things that have to be said about that. So, the city's fund structure has three funds, general fund, water fund, and sewer fund. And the water and the sewer fund are, um, self-funding models. That means the debt in each of those funds, uh, is required to be funded from the user fees in those funds, so you don't touch that. So, then we go to the, the general fund, and, um, the surplus, much of the surplus in that, uh, large amount that you just, uh, spoke to is the water capital reserve. In that, uh, the city has put, been putting money away, uh, for future infrastructure, and that's about eight million of that surplus. So, um, having said that, back to the general fund, um, it doesn't have a large capital surplus. So having said that, back to the general fund, it doesn't have a large capital surplus. So you basically can't get the money from there. The other thing is, is that in many of the capital funds, there's restrictions because you've committed that money to other projects. So basically, what's been occurring in the last few years is that the funding sources for different types of capital are, you use basically some fair share, some if you have partnering, and then debt borrowing for, we've used it for roadwork and sidewalk work. In the two thousand and fourteen budget, the other thing that's important to note is those road projects are local area service and subject to the residents approving those projects. And then they will, in turn, have the opportunity to either pay upfront or pay over ten years, so.
Thank you. That's my question.
Councilor Parswell?
Yeah, just a question around the sewer trunk line, just my memory. Originally, the price was five, for the main trunk line part, sort of the urgent piece of that was about five million.
That's correct.
And I heard you say, and I think it's in your reports somewhere, that the cost estimate has now gone up, right?
That's correct.
By three million possibly?
About that, yeah.
Yeah. I've lost track as to, did we get a subsequent report? Or how do we know that? I mean, I'm not doubting you at all, but what information came to staff that caused you to change the budgeted amount?
Yeah, so through your worship, as the approval went through last year, you go from, help me out, it's a Class D. And once that approval came through, staff went to the consultants or the engineers to get a Class C, Class C estimate. So from that Class C estimate, the cost went from five million, basically, to eight million. And then that estimate in itself will be subject to tendering. So if tendering comes in over eight, then you will either have to get additional funding or additional borrowing.
Right. So the initial five was approved by council. We haven't gone to reverse petition approval on that yet. So we will have to do that, and with this additional three million as well, unless we get some contribution from the federal government.
That's correct. And I mean, it was evident last year when we were going through the process that if you're going to go to borrowing, if you're going to go to the public for borrowing, your cost estimate better be pretty secure because you're not going to go out twice.
Oh, yes.
And it was evident early on from the engineering's report that the cost was going to go up. So we just held back on the debt approval process.
Thanks.
Jim?
So, your worship, periodically in these meetings, I always interject when there is a broader picture item about something that's being discussed in specific. So the broader picture item here, and this is a wonderful introduction to it. What you're working off here, this budget, is not an outcome. This budget is a plan and a projection that is designed to accomplish certain outcomes. But the budget itself is not an outcome. We will not know what the sewer line costs until it's been taken to market and somebody has bid on it. That is just, everything up until that time is a guess. It's a guess informed by the best information available and the best expertise available, but it's still a guess. And so much of your budget is like that. You are, you have line items that are guesses and projections about everything, from the weather to the availability of contractors. And you will, in the end, okay an envelope out of which all your outcomes must come. But they, if Shelley and I had a crystal ball, we would be buying lottery tickets, not making budgets for you folks. So I guarantee you that there is no single line item in this budget that's going to come in exactly like it was planned and projected on the third of February two thousand and fourteen. Overall, though, your budget is going to come in under or equal to what you've allocated because otherwise Shelley and I go to jail. So that won't be happening.
Raise the roof?
Thank you. No, as long as it's not me. Or us.
Duncan, or Councilor Mollinson, sorry?
Yeah, sure. I suppose firstly, I'd like to thank everyone involved for their incredible work putting this document together. It's, I'm going to be looking forward to getting acquainted with it over the next couple of weeks. And I also appreciated much of the information in the cover report. The, I suppose, first thing that hasn't been said already for myself was just a question about this. I suppose it was just one thing that sort of surprised me. It was just the province extending, for two thousand and fourteen, it says, I believe I'm quoting here. It says for two thousand and fourteen, the province extends a sixty percent credit for school taxes on all major industrial properties. What the, what's up with that? I don't know what the, is that specifically for two thousand and fourteen or is that a regular?
Okay, so that is the final year of a three-year commitment the provincial government made to assist major industry, which was seen by the province to be in a time of turmoil as we worked through the world collapse in commodity pricing. The feeling was mills, mines, oil and gas were in need of temporary relief from school tax. So sixty is actually a reduced level from previous years, but it's the last year of exemption under the current program. There's been no messaging to us so far that the province intends to reinstitute that exemption going into the future. It's their own revenue that they are granting exemption to. So they wouldn't necessarily consult us. And we only have the task of passing that information on for the major industrial players that are within our community. Many in our area are in the unincorporated areas where the province deals directly with them.
Thank you.
Neat.
Anything further?
Yeah, I'll go with a second one, I suppose. And this one's really not coming from anywhere. It was just, it's just an example of my mind wandering. I saw under the operating maybe projections, it was just a short sheet there, of telephone bills for the corporation totaling one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty-five. I was just wondering, isn't that typically an amount that would go to council or something like that? You know, the threshold's like seventy-five or something like that? I don't know what the, we don't tender just for, or sorry, we don't have one provider for all telephone services. That's just accumulation. I'm not sure.
So yes, there was a report to council on a new provider when the existing, the existing deal was Blackberry's with Bell, maybe? I can't remember.
Sure.
Blackberry's with Bell, and now the new deal is iPhones with Bell again. And the new tender is just about to be out. June, the new tender will be out, and it'll come to council to award, I don't know, Blackberry's with Rogers or whoever's the likely low plan.
The person, again, is all the same to me. It's just a curiosity for me.
I'm going to make a couple of comments after my opening. And one has to do with the, obviously, I'm going to keep going back because I'm so pumped about the fair share allocation of how important that is to us in the long term for, I believe, the community. So by having fifty percent of that fair share allocation now to capital, what it means is, in my view, is in the long term, the more we migrate the dependency off of that fair share onto our capital, the less we're borrowing, the less we have the dependency to borrowing. Our debt servicing this year in two thousand and fourteen will be, principal and interest will be around four, four and a half million dollars. So to me, the long-term benefits to our community of having that fair share money for planned capital reduces the need for us in the long term for borrowing. How cool would it be if we all of a sudden reduced our debt servicing to by a couple million dollars? So you take that as a tax, just on the basis of our tax rates and the revenue we generate to the community from tax revenue of thirteen and a half million dollars. All of a sudden, if you're talking a couple million bucks off of that potentially, it's a significant impact to our community in terms of being able to impact those long-term benefits that we all say in terms of ensuring we have affordability and tax structure and tax prudence to that. And I just love the ability for us. And so I just, when I saw that from my, when I first read the report, I was, honest to God, I just couldn't believe how
It was somersault.
positive that was for our community and moving forward. And so I really want to emphasize that. I appreciate how that's been able to unfold in the first year. The other one for me was the increase in tax, our residential assessment and commercial assessment in terms of having nine or ten percent increase in that. And I guess when I read the report and see the fifty percent, so if we hold the tax residential rate for our residential rate at five sixteen, and you see the increase of new assessment, so that's new revenue, so I'm completely good with that. But I always was of the view or the opinion about saying, okay, well, if the assessment goes up by seven or eight percent, you always want to try to have an impact on your rate correspondingly so you're not driving new revenue from that. But as I see the report and you see fifty percent of the residential customers will have a less than a hundred dollar impact on their rates for two thousand and fourteen or their overall taxes. For me, I guess I think about it in the long term of three to five years. If we can ever get to the point where we say, we now have this revenue in place to provide the stability of capital and operating, and then make significant impacts to our overall view. And it fits, I think, into the part of it for me in terms of the fiscal gap and how you address that. So I just honestly, from the high level, that component, I just am really, really pleased with what I think we've sending out into our community this year. As it relates to the debt, it just speaks to that to me in terms of we've got, you know, an additional, I think Councilor McFadden or somebody raised about the additional five point eight million in new debt for us this year, and it's just planned stuff. And if we can get to the point where we can reduce the, we spent a lot of money in our community in the last ten years in big capital projects. And so to me, the more we can, are able to get the sewer trunk line done, get these projects completed this year, I think it just stands us in such a positive future for the community in terms of being able to address that. So my hope is that we get the commitment and the support from our federal government in terms of getting some support to our capital infrastructure program on that sewer trunk line and reduce our dependency and our need for some additional borrowing. So I just wanted to say that as a preface from the two or three key points for me that I see in this document today in front of us. And I'm looking forward to having that conversation about people and understanding the impacts of rates and what it means to us in the long term for that overall financial picture. Jim?
Through your worship, so on a couple of the points you raised. Firstly, on tax rate setting, although it is Shelley's objective every year to make tax rate setting as scientific a process as it can be with reference to affordability measures and the policies of council, the truth is, it is as much an art as it is a science. So the amount that people would like to pay in taxes is zero. We know that amount. The amount they are willing to pay is a political decision from you folk because if you overstep that mark, it'll be new folk who sit in these chairs. And so the science part is the affordability measures that Shelley shows you. We literally, Shelley and I actually look at the effect on every single folio in the community of the tax rate we are proposing. And we break them down for you into classes. The number of folios that are affected will pay less or will pay the same or will pay a hundred dollars more or two hundred. And we provide you those general breakdowns, but we actually look beyond that to the effect on people who own their homes, people who are seniors who own their homes. We look at all of that. I have a list here that I can't, for privacy reasons, tell you, but I can tell you which twenty folios by name are going to pay the most increase under this proposal. We look at that because we're seeking not to have a situation where taxes exceed affordability because there are objective measures of that. You will see that in your collections, and you're not seeing that. Annually, your collections are running ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent of taxes billed are paid by deadline. If we miss the mark on affordability, that number goes, and believe me, we have been in this situation. Mayor Baumstead's been in this situation when he was Councilor Baumstead, where collections are nothing like that, where they're seventy percent if you're lucky. You see it if homes, owned homes in which the homeowner lives, go to tax sale. We haven't had a situation like that in several years, and there were special circumstances, about the only one we've had in the last five. That's another sign you look for that are objective measurements to tell you whether or not these affordability measures are hitting the market on. So we are confident that what we are proposing to you is affordable, but we can't speak to how willing people will be to pay this. That's what your public consultation tells you. So that was point one. Point two on debt, comments made by both Councilor McFadden and yourself, your worship. I'll give my little speech here that I give every year. Debt is neither bad nor good. Debt is a tool. Sometimes you need a shovel, sometimes you need a hammer. They're both tools. Debt is a tool. It has advantages in that it spreads out the cost of an item over many generations of taxpayer. So if you pay cash, what that means is this year's taxpayers pay the whole amount, and any taxpayer coming on any year after this does not. So is it fair that Safeway would pay an amount for a capital improvement this year, and a rival grocery store that opens up next year would never pay a dime for the same asset? So debt is actually a tool of fairness. And usually, you apply it for the fairness reason as well as the affordability reason. It's obviously easier to come up with four million a year than it is to come up with forty million in a year. And for instance, if you're to build the water line, you're really seriously going to have to look at the bad aspect of debt. The disadvantage of debt is you pay more because you pay interest in addition to the capital cost. And so in times of low interest like right now, debt is actually a tool that's likely to be preferred in many circumstances over paying for cash. As interest rates rise, as I believe they will, there are very, there's lesser occasions where it's the appropriate tool. But it is not accurate to apply any labeling to debt over and above the fact that it is a tool that is good to apply in some, for some applications, and in other applications, it's the wrong tool. But it itself is not a person. It's not good or evil. It's just a tool.
Thanks, Jim. Further comments? Questions? Councilor Parswell?
Yes, thank you. Again, this question, by the way, Shelley, you remember I said I found another? Have a look on page twenty-three under insurance. This is not my question.
Not using this one up?
The first line, you've got five hundred. Don't you mean to have fifty there?
No, that's correct.
That is correct.
Yeah, it is correct.
Okay. Good.
We're just saying, basically, the point made there was, we're just going through the RFP process. So we're actually have about a seventy thousand dollar savings from the previous allocation. So but in total, that's about how much the city pays for ensuring all its infrastructure, its equipment, everything. So those changes still have to be put through the plan.
So my, back to my question, again, going back to the sewer line. So the eight million dollars, if we get no federal funding, would have to be borrowed and would be applied to the utility.
That's correct.
Now then, my understanding is that that eight million is the absolutely urgent must-do component. What are the plans for the other work that was identified, which at the initial report was about fourteen million dollars in addition to the original five? When is that planned in the long-term planning?
I'm going to defer to Kevin, but I know it's in the sewer master plan, and they were looking at it over, I'm going to say, the five-year plan. I think a few projects will come forward, but go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, through your worship, that's exactly right. We talked about it this year, and
Yeah, through your worship, that's exactly right. We talked about it this year, and we need to get the sewer trunk line, very big project, get that up, run, underway, completed. And then, our, the plan called for a number of other improvements throughout the community. And the suggestion within the plan was approximately five years.
I can't hear him.
Yep.
Sorry, Counselor.
Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
All right. So, what I was saying is that the intent was to get the sewer trunk line project started and completed, and then the sewer master plan calls for additional funding, additional projects. And the recommendation within the plan was to look at about $500,000 annually as a bit of a renewal program. So, that's likely what we'll start to target and build a reserve and start chipping away at those projects identified on a priority basis.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Haring.
I suppose another random question, your worship. I, again, will just, I suppose as I was going through the cover report, I found it necessary to just write down the sentences that I wanted to ask questions about anyhow. I, I believe it's budgeted for a 2% increase in the, well, a general 2% increase. I believe that's either in staffing or in the total budget for the library for 2014. And what I've written down here is, however, this will change pending the QP contract negotiation. I thought that this was, you know, we had, you know, sort of resolved the negotiation last year. Isn't that the case?
No, through your worship, library bargaining is set to commence March 10th, and we assume their aspiration will be to match the city workers 2.5%. So, the amount in the budget for now is 2%, which is the general increase that Shelley has built in for existing services, which is to cover inflationary costs such as energy, as well as wage increases. So, in the areas where we have QP workforce doing the work, we're already over that 2%, and we have to compensate for that by finding efficiencies and savings in some other areas. And because the budget is a standalone at the library, if the increase comes in more than the 2%, then additional funding is going to have to be allocated by council to that budget, or else the library's going to have to reduce hours. So, that's, that's a subsequent decision that council will have to make after the outcome of bargaining.
Gotcha. Cool.
Anything further?
Don't worry me. Yeah, I'm good.
Thank you.
Right now.
Anyone? Counselor Parswell?
Yeah, I'm just on page 28. Again, my memory, I remember there was some emergency work done between the fire hall and the city this, this past year. That was, I believe, to do with heating systems.
Yes.
So, can you just fill me in on the fire, fire hall boiler replacement of 400,000? This is, we're not just budgeting to pay for work we've done. This is in addition to the other work.
Yeah, actually, I'll kick that over to Duncan, because he should talk about the RCMP boiler replacement program.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, the fire hall boilers from about 1980, I'd have to get back to my report and find the exact year. That's the boiler system itself. So, the 400,000 is to take out the boiler that's in the fire hall right now that supplies city hall heat and the fire hall heat, and replace all of the pumps, all the valves, and everything in that mechanical room.
Yeah, sorry, maybe my question wasn't clear. I have no doubt if you, that it needs replacing. What was the work that was done last year with the heating system here in city hall? Sorry.
That was the line from that boiler into this building.
Right.
That was a $200,000 budget, I believe, and that was to dig up the road out front and put a new line.
Because that line had broken.
Ruptured out in the, the middle of that driveway, yes.
Yeah. No, I, I have no need. If staff say that boiler needs replacing, that's good enough for me. I'm just trying to fill in some holes in my memory bank here. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
For, for interest sake, though, so whenever you're looking at replacing a boiler, you're also looking at replacing the systems with a different system, a non-boiler system, forced air furnaces, that sort of thing. So, in the case of both fire hall and the RCMP building, you know, our hope was that there might be a more modest expenditure in a system change, but as it turns out, this is still the best bang for our buck, and the technology in boilers has changed enormously. And so, we're convinced that the operational costs are going to be lesser with the new systems as well.
Just to add on that, just some redundancy as well. We could use smaller two boilers as opposed to one large boiler.
If I may, on that same page, one last question.
Sure.
The general building energy retrofits, the four projects, the Kenboric Aquatic Center, the circulating pump retrofit, the heat recovery system, the Memorial Arena LED lighting retrofit, and the multiplex LED lighting retrofit, are these the projects, Jim, that we were talking about from the, the carbon fund that are going to be funded from the project?
Yes, the, you've set up a reserve fund for capital expenditure where you charge yourself for your carbon use, and you take that money and spend it on projects that will reduce your carbon use and hence your, carbon isn't used for free. Carbon is charged dearly by PNG. So, these projects, and by BC Hydro. So, these projects are actually, you'll see in your capital budget, there is a business case on the, on each of these projects for the time it will take to repay the expenditure or the investment from reduced energy costs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Conversation, discussion? Shelley, may I ask the question about short-term borrowing, as it relates to the overall, what's the status of our short-term borrowing today?
Through your worship, we have no short-term borrowing right now. 2013 was the last year. It was paid off. So, historically, the city had borrowed 295,000 for the building that the Calvin Crook Center is being renovated as. So, that was a five-year short-term borrowing, and it was paid off. And then, we also had a five-year capital lease whereby some borrowing was secured for the kitchen equipment at the multiplex, and that matured in 2013. So, there was about 600,000 that came off the table last year in debt payments, which makes a significant different, difference in, for new debt coming on. So, that was good news.
And those show up in the same in our debt servicing, whether it's long-term, short-term, it's all in that debt service.
Absolutely, yeah. Regardless of the instrument used, short-term leasing, long-term projections, everything is put in as a debt servicing cost or in the outstanding balance.
Thank you. And just to refresh me, years, so years ago, it was, the short-term borrowing was $50 per resident up to?
That's correct.
And you had five years to repay the short-term borrowing?
That's correct.
So, what's our capacity on short-term then today? About 700 grand?
600, I'd say. A little over 600?
Yes.
12,000?
The, the provincial government limits the amount you can short-term borrow, because short-term borrowing can be done without the approval of the electorate. And of course, the aspiration in the legislation is that the public will have a say in indebtedness. So, it has to be less than five years. I think our cap would be 600 and a bit thousand at any one time to be outstanding. And, and at some periods in time, short-term borrowing is far more expensive than long-term borrowing, and at other periods in time, it's actually cheaper. And I think we're in a time right now where it's actually cheaper.
It's about 1.75?
Yeah. So, the interest rates are extraordinarily, they're historically low right now. And so, some of our, you know, normal reality has altered a bit because of that. So, the short-term borrowing that we had was at low rates, and any that you took on now would be at very low rates, subject to change in the future.
So, I just, I guess the reason I ask it is because we had an issue this morning that we dealt with on our grant stands, and certainly we need to identify some funding source for that if we move forward with it. And I wasn't sure exactly in terms of the status of our short-term borrowing. And if we did borrow short-term, and we were able to raise money someplace else, would it maybe be beneficial, gives us another option in terms of a funding source if we need to do that to capital projects?
Yes, of course.
Counselor Parswell?
Yeah, I just have to comment that I know the Historical Society will be pleased that the city's continuing with its multi-year commitment to the NAR station. And I'm sure that when I meet with the Mile Zero Park Society tomorrow night and share with them the partnership that the city's willing to engage in, they will be delighted with that because the washrooms upgrade at the Mile Zero Park is considered to be a potential way of securing good, if you like, use of the campground and therefore revenue for the Mile Zero Park. So, the 40,000 of that project will come from the Mile Zero Park Society. So, that, that's something that grabbed my attention because two groups I linked with. Am I right in assuming that the last item on page 28, the Canada Event Center, the quarter of a million dollars for the installation of Southside Concrete, was that something that was omitted as a cost savings initially, or is that because of deterioration?
No, through your worship, the original plans called for no exposed native soil, that the building was to be entirely finished. The floors were to be concreted. In fact, the concrete was to be covered. But because those, those locations were, were not visible and were not in use, when it became necessary for council to look for cost engineering on the project, the scope was reduced to take those out. Over time, though, as you will see in the capital sheets, the effect of that has been, those areas are not available for use, although there are now uses for them. But secondly, they're having a very negative effect on the mechanical systems in the building, which were not designed to process the dirt that comes up off of those floors when it's attempted to use the space. So, over time, our aspiration is to eventually have the building that was originally designed. But that time is not going to be this year. That time's going to be over time. So, this is a piece of work remaining to do to realize the original design.
Thank you. Counselor Malkinson?
This, this concrete work is in the, it's, it's right, right next to the old Rage dressing room, right? This is in the?
No, actually, it's on the other side of the building from that.
Oh.
The work next to the Rage dressing room was done in partnership with the Rage. So, the community group there, running that team, concreted that side. This is across the building.
Gotcha.
So, it would be behind the kitchen, basically. The, when Ryan tours you, he calls it the future convention space.
That's it, yes.
But do not ever let him believe that you've committed to turning that into a convention center. But he just calls it the convention.
Don't even make eye contact with him when he's saying that.
Yeah, just don't even talk to him.
It's the northeast corner of the?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Anything further?
Well, there, there's, obviously, when council meets and deliberates over some strategic actions, there may be some things that need resourcing. One thing that stands out for me right now is Jim will need some resources as it relates to the communication unfolding of fiscal gap discussions as per the resolution that's not resourced right now. I don't think the resources are there. And of course, I think I'm, I'm operating on the assumption that we'll have time to review in more depth. We'll go through this again. And I've asked for a list of all the consultants that have been engaged in that purpose. I only have one question that's in this initial report, so that it hasn't, I haven't asked it, I will ask if it's okay, is about the GPS system for trucks. Is there an issue that necessitates this? What is the advantage of that? Does that, assuming all our vehicles that we use, equipment is, are within city limits, so they don't get lost. So, what are we doing it for?
You know, you'd think that'd be the, so, the advantage is to having your fleet GPS equipped, which is now industry standard in the transportation industry. Firstly, the GPS does more than monitor location. The GPS is basically an onboard computer that monitors when the oil is getting low. It monitors the speeds at which the vehicle runs. It monitors the, just basically the operational characteristics of the vehicle. So, they're great aid in maintenance, and which is why most fleets have gone to them. Secondly, we have, it's not true that we know where every vehicle is at every moment. Our work crews are generally self-directed. So, at the beginning of the day, the public works foremen say, we'll meet with the crews and explain the work to be done and the blocks in which it is to be done. But, as we have found from snow removal, that's not the same as knowing in real time where the vehicle is. So, another advantage of GPS is that it allows you to have that real-time information, which can then be placed into an app, so that any citizen can see where the graders are, for instance. And if we're going to move on items like parking enforcement for snow removal, it's going to be a great benefit if the citizen can know when they need to go move their vehicle, because the grader is nearly there. And then, finally, the GPS also provides the ability for lone workers to be connected. So, if they are, if you are a remote worker going, for instance, to, which is not within the city limits, but you're a remote worker from water treatment plant who is going to the intake to check the intake, there are work safety regulations about how connected you need to be, so that if you have problems, we'll discover that. And they're a lot more easily accomplished in the GPS, modern GPS units than in the antiquated radio setup or even cellphone issues we have now. So, it started out being based on the desire for that ability to tell our citizens in real time where something like a snow removal piece of equipment was, or in the summer where a grass-cutting piece of equipment is, or in shoulder seasons where the steamers are, which are all things citizens would really like to know real time. And our supervisors would like to know that real time as well. It started there, but when we began investigating the systems, we discovered that all of these fleet maintenance issues have been, the technology's been available for a long time now, and there's so many good and useful applications for fleet maintenance, that that's why a trucking company now would never think of not having the GPS.
Thanks, Jim. So, and I just, I guess I'd like to say this, to me, is the first step in opening the door into the public, into the community of our budget deliberations, our financial planning. I appreciate, obviously, the work that Shelley and Jim and all the staff have put into getting us to this first step and first stage. And it absolutely now is the deep dive occurs, and we start to engage in the conversation, discussion, and moving it forward to conclusion in April, I think, when we have to have it locked down. So, this is our first step in that process, and I really appreciate the work that you guys have done in getting this to council and some of the really positive signals that I feel are being sent in terms of our fiscal plan. So, conversation?
Call the question.
Call the question. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried.
So, as Counselor Parswell was mentioning, he's submitted some questions to Shelley. We encourage the rest of you to do so as quickly as you can. As each set is received, So you will, you'll get to see the questions your colleagues are asking and the answers to them as well as your own. And the, what we have found is that a councillor will ask a question, it will turn out other councillors have the same question or some variation of that question, and actually, quite a bit of detailed work will go on in these exchanges of information. And that will all find its way into the next document that you see. Because a less useful way to do this would be for, to wait two weeks for the next meeting and then bring your questions then, because then it's two weeks before we can answer them for you, so.
Thank you.
I do not have any questions about the paint that you're going to use on the highways, Jim.
You know, it's funny you should say that because I don't know if you've noticed any of the media reports, but our business changes rapidly, and sometimes it changes without us being aware of it, because it changes somewhere else and they don't do much to publicize it. So as an example, the paints being used for crosswalk painting have changed significantly, and it's something that we are now building into what we're doing. And I don't know if we're going to use beet juice on the roads or not, but we're sure looking at it. The beet juice in use in Williams Lake has had some positive effects.
Look forward to that. So we're, no further business? Motion to adjourn? Oh, sorry, Shelley?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank the team that's sitting over there. It's a team effort to put, to put the document together. They basically drop everything when I say "help," so, thank you.
Thank you as well, tell everybody, appreciate it. Motion to adjourn, councillor Wilber, councillor Wilkinson, all in favor, opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Bye, sir.
Bye, sir. Thanks.